My name is Chad Brown. I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner of the Riverbend Township. I would like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum, Cable, and AT&amp;T for making it possible for our citizens and our television audience and live streaming audience. I would like to present your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my far right.
Good evening. Kathy Cloninger, representing the Dallas Township.
Kim Johnson, Gastonia Township.
Good evening. Bob Hovis, Crowder's Mountain Township.
Tom Keeger, Gastonia. That's it.
And Commissioner Worley?
Ronnie Worley, South Point Township. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Worley is joining us via the phone tonight. So our first item on the agenda tonight is Proclaimations, Commendations, and Certificates. I will now ask Commissioner Cloniger to make her way down. She's going to proclaim August 2024 as Child Support Awareness Month here in Gaston County. And as we do that, I'd like to welcome the newest manager. Matt Roten has become the county manager. And that was last Monday, I think, was his first day on the job for that. But he had been with us for over 10 years in his capacity here in Gaston County. So welcome Matt Roten as our new county manager.
I would like to present or proclaim the month of August 2024 as Child Support Awareness Month in Gaston County. And whoever is present here can come forward. So whereas children are the best part of ourselves, the sum of their pasts and the promise of our future, the guarantee that our lives, values, and dreams will flourish long after we are gone. And whereas children are entitled to financial support from their parents in Gaston County, continues to improve its efforts at child support collections. As whereas Gaston County applauds those parents who support their children and make child support payments consistently to provide security for their children. And whereas in fiscal year 2023 to 2024, approximately $14 million in child support was collected from parents of Gaston County children. And whereas there are 6,990 child support orders in place to ensure that 7,875 children receive a financial support from their parents. And whereas many concerned and dedicated child support professionals, judges, attorneys, clerk of courts, and sheriff personnel work to establish and enforce child support orders for Gaston County children. And whereas increasing public awareness of the importance of child support through education, outreach, parental involvement, and reinforce the position that all parents are responsible for the financial, emotional, and fiscal support of their children. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Gaston County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of August 2024 as Child Support Awareness Month. And reminds us all that we are invested in the future of Gaston County's children. And we can collaborate to make that future stable and bright to be adopted the 27th day of August 2024.
So we have leadership here that would like to speak.
Thank you. You're quite welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for your continued support in the work that our child support enforcement agents do. One of the first jobs that I ever had with Gaston County Department of Social Services was as a child support agent, and I still miss it. It was really rewarding work. So, thank you all.
Thank you. It is with great pleasure for the Gaston County Board of Commissioners to honor citizens who have selfishly, unselfishly given of their time, talent, skills, and energies in service as an appointee to one of our many boards and commissions. This type of service is the foundation for citizen involvement in our county government and is helping shape the future of our community. We gratefully acknowledge the work of the following individuals, and certificates of appreciation have been forwarded to them. Mo Snipes, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Michael Collins, Workforce Development. Mr. Adams? Thank you, sir. Moving right along, the first item, next item on the agenda is Presentations. Foster Care Presentation Overview: Key Insights for County Leadership. Ms. Kanika Drakeford, Foster Care Licensing Supervisor. And Seth Derner, Quality Assurance Specialist will be given the presentation. The floor is yours.
Thank you Chairman Brown and Commissioners for the opportunity to speak to you today about the critical state of foster care in our county and across the state of North Carolina. As of April 2024, there are 10,846 children in foster care across North Carolina. However, there are only 6,057 licensed foster homes available. Due to this severe shortage, a lot of kids are being placed outside their home communities, far away from their schools, friends, and familiar surroundings. This displacement impacts their well-being and emotional their well-being and emotional and psychological well-being. Sorry. As they often experience multiple placements along with delayed permanency, academic struggles, as well as as well as developing meaningful attachments. Thank you. The top reasons for children entering foster care across the state of North Carolina is neglect, drug abuse, housing instability, as well as physical abuse. Neglect alone is the sole main reason for removal from homes in North Carolina as well as in Gaston County. Drug abuse by parents is the second leading cause. This affects nearly 2,000 children throughout the state. Our concern is here in Gaston County as well as nationwide, statewide. There are over 351 children in foster care here in Gaston County. However, we only have 92 homes that have the capacity to accommodate 182 kids. What that means is over half our kids, roughly around 175, would have to be placed outside their home communities. And what this does is add to the trauma that they're already experiencing.
Good evening. I just kind of wanted to contextualize some of the information that Ms. Drakeford gave you all with some supplemental information. Before you see a map of North Carolina, and each one of these dots represents one of the children we have in the custody of the department. As you can see, we do have a good amount of our kids in Gaston County, but they're also spread across the region. With Gaston County, this is a map of our homes that we manage, of all of our 92. We were given permission to manage some homes outside of our county due to the lack of resources that the other counties had at the time. But looking at this, you can see that there is a need on the western half of the county as most of our homes are in these municipalities. Western Gastonia, Bessemer, Cherryville, and the in-between of Tryon School Road are definite areas of need for our recruitment to ensure that kids from those areas can maintain in their home environments. I also wanted to take time to show the good work that our team has been doing compared to the other counties in our area. As you can see, on the left-hand side, these are the total homes that us and surrounding counties have at this given time. I include Buncombe and Wake because a lot of the times they are shown as benchmarks of our practice, areas that are innovative and successful. And we have more managed homes than they do, which is, speaks volumes to the work that we've been doing. Since October 2021, we've grown our foster homes by 77%. With our licensed and relicensed homes, it speaks to our ability to, once we make those strong relationships and support our foster homes, we're able to retain them. Oftentimes, we only have a home closed due to adoption and a child finding permanency in that home. So this talks about the time that a child spends in custody. With our information from July, the average time that a current child in our foster care has been in custody is 26, just over 26 and a half months. And their average age is just over eight years old, which tracks with national information. That puts them at having been in foster care for an average of a quarter of their life. Kids with a plan of adoption have been in custody for about 35, just over 35 and a half months, with their age being just over six and a half years old. That puts them of being in foster care for half their life. Key issues that drive some of these areas are the availability of therapeutic resources in our local area. Sometimes when a kid is not able to get the treatment here, they have to move farther out to a private agency or another county. And if they are able to settle their needs there, sometimes they're not able to transition back to the wait times to get that continuity of care in our home county. That prolongs their ability to return, potentially return home to their community. As well as the length of the legal process, the federal government does a review on systemic needs of every state. North Carolina, along with many, have a systemic need of improving our court process. And some of that being the lack of availability for representation for our parents, the ability to get service, the times that it takes to serve a parent and move through that process, potentially to publication if a hearing needs to take place. It is all a lengthy piece of time. I'm going to turn it back over. Actually, I'm sorry. This is my part two. I apologize. So just another, some recent trends of the good work we've been doing in the last year. We've had 133 children enter foster care since June of 2023. And in that time, we've had 48 of our children reunify with our families. We've had 58 children be adopted. And since July of 2021, we've completed 124 adoptions. 19 children in the last year have obtained permanency through guardianship. These are all children we've been able to find either home with their family, home with their parents, or forever home that they didn't know they needed. And now I will turn it over.
So this is where we need your help. And I stand before you because we are faced with a serious foster care crisis here in Gaston County and in the state of North Carolina. However, with the, with public assistance and with the community, we can possibly decrease the amount of children that are placed outside their home. Gaston County has over 700 churches in the county. Therefore, if we had one family from each church, we could have more of kids in their home communities. And we could cut down on some of the trauma. So the data presented here today paints a clear picture. It lets us know that we are facing a significant crisis. And along with that, we have found out that there's a shortage of homes, the reason why kids come into care, and what we can do to possibly help that. So I ask that you please consider this data carefully. Support any initiatives that would assist us in recruiting more homes, supporting those families that are already serving us, and eventually keep our children here in Gaston County close to their home. Thank you for your time and your continued commitment to the well-being of our children.
I know on the last slide, there was a QR code. If you could pull that one up, Barry, or just get to the last code. That way we'll keep that up for just a few minutes while we ask the questions. That way people can see it. For anybody who's interested in learning more, they can get with Kanika or Seth with that through the QR code. And so we'll leave that up until the end of the presentation. Commissioner Keeger?
Thank you. Great job, guys. A little curious, I guess. Mecklenburg's probably six times the size of Gaston in population, yet we have about 24 more licensed homes than they do. How, how is that possible?
So a piece of that is, it's, we have more licensed homes that the county manages. Mecklenburg has the fortunate resources of having a bunch of private agencies that manage homes that Mecklenburg doesn't have to manage them. Mecklenburg County as a whole does have a licensing team that manages their own homes. And this can include, I'm not going to go into different agency names, but therapeutic homes as well that most counties don't manage, and such like that.
Do we have any private providers?
We have a few based in Gaston County. Some of the agencies that are based in Charlotte or Mecklenburg County, pardon me, do have homes here as well.
Well, the numbers that you quoted this evening, how many kids are here or there? Is that including private partnership members also? Are they just the ones that are in the county?
The, the map that you saw has every kid that was on our previous board bill, where they were placed at on that map. As far as the number of kids that have, were placed in Gaston County, including private agency homes, the approximate number for last month is 115.
Okay.
And that's including private agencies.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Mr. Cloniger?
I would like to make some comments. Clearly from your presentation this evening, we are really in a foster care crisis. Clearly, from your presentation this evening, we are really in a foster care crisis. While I'm happy to see that we have moved the needle in some areas, there remains much work as a community to do and to end this crisis. To Kanika and Seth, I want to thank you for your passion and leadership. It's clear to me that you're fully committed to making sure that every child in our community has a permanent home and one that is filled with love. Kanika, after attending Bishop Martin's event and call to action, I want to know, I want you to know that you embody Bishop Martin's passion and purpose. And we're lucky to have you and your team leading that change or charge here in Gaston County. Bishop Martin stated at the event that being a foster care parent is not for everyone, but everyone can do something to help these children on their difficult journey. I encourage all those present and listening at home to reach out to Kanika and her team to see how you can help. Lastly, I want to thank Tiana Shans and Misty McDaniel for lifting up, supporting, and sending Kanika and Seth here tonight as they embody the mission and passion of the foster care unit. And thank you for all that you do and your truly, your dedication. Because it takes, at the end of the day, it takes everybody working together for the common good of all. And I was really, truly impressed that day of the presentation that you gave with Bishop Martin. And thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hovis?
Folks, thank you for your information tonight. Do we have, or do we regularly schedule workshops for individuals who think they may have an interest in being part of the foster home program? And my follow-up question to that is how often do individuals who offer their home as a foster domicile end up with the opportunity to actually adopt fosters who come through their program?
Okay. So we are in the midst of a class now. Due to our Possum Trial event, we got a lot of awareness. We just started a class last night where we have 12 families that said they heard about everything that we were doing in the community. They wanted to do their part. So what we do is we're offering six classes throughout the year. And sometimes we're even doing more than that because we decided as an agency and as a team that we would meet families where they are. So if they can't come to our classes from 6:00 to 9:00, we have some daytime classes where we do decide in together. So we're trying to meet everybody where they're at. So if they say they want to foster, then we are immediately reaching out to these families because we don't want them to lose the interest because we need them.
And are those listed on the county website and/or our television station when those are taking place?
I'm not sure.
If not, Adam said yes. So that's what I'm just saying. It's all about communication. And you folks are obviously doing yeoman's work, and we're very appreciative of that. But I know that as a novice, having never been experienced, having experienced anything with the foster system, I would like to understand more about it as a concerned grandparent and other, and would like to know more about it. But thank you.
And I wanted to address the second part of your question. Of the 124 adoptions of the last three years, the 20 of those were, 20 homes, Gaston County homes, were part of those.
I have just a couple of questions. I guess 92 of the 351, how many of those homes are doubled up or have more than one occupant of our foster system?
We have three homes right now that currently have seven kids, and the state capacity is five.
I guess my next question is, it may be for Angie and Steve as well. Do we have a flyer that introduces the, I like to do a introductory flyer that talks about from the first stage, if Bob wanted to do this, what is the first initial step? I want to have that, I want to have that flyer. I want to have each one of them sent to each church. And then I want to be able to, where they can do it on a email copy, where they send it out and they can have it readily available to their members and what we have to do. I'd also like to find a way to get that into some maybe some restaurants that just kind of say, hey, if we could get like a restaurant that says, hey, we want to partner up and just have it just somewhere, stores where it says, hey, are you willing to adopt? And it has a really nice flyer that says that. And I would also like to, I just lost my train of thought because I was brainstorming over here, the smoke's coming out. But do we do any, and I hate to say this word, do we do anything for the foster parent itself, the ones we have? If we have 92, do we do anything that says, hey, thank you? I mean, like a small as a gift basket or something that Adam and them could put a cup in or something that says, thank you, or I'm a foster parent or whatever. I know we do it for campaigns and stuff. There should be stuff we could get. But I want to do something special and try to incentivize some people to really get into this as how we do it because there is such a need. And I know that's a lot off of what you guys do, but I put it on them to make that happen as far as what you need help with. If there's any resources that we can help with you guys in helping to do that, please let Matt know or Angie and them, and we'll get to, we'll get to whatever we need to do on site. But I want to thank you for your presentation. It is a big need, and I think it's going to be one of those needs that we're, it's going to continue to get more rather than less as we continue to grow in our group. But thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other matters that need to come before this board at this time? Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we'd like to ask for a very brief closed session to discuss some economic development matters under Chapter 143, 318, 111, 84, and to also consult with Attorney General Ray 3.
Do I hear a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Motion made by, commotion, Commissioner Hovis? Seconded by Commissioner Keiger. All in favor? We'll be back momentarily. No action was taken, do I have a motion to reenter? This concludes our work session for tonight. Our next regular meeting is Tuesday, August 27th at 6:00 PM here in the Harlebee Gaston Junior Public Forum Courthouse. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions, please refer those to Ms. Donna S. Buff at 704-866-3196. Good night, domiciles.